Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, July 23 Commission meeting. If you'd stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and reminder to silence your cellphones and meeting documents are next to Commissioner Kelly. Are they?
Yeah.
Oh, there they are. And listening devices are available from Robert, and Robert's not here either, so here he comes. If not, then we can go right to routine business.
Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna make him, I'm gonna make a motion to amend 5B to go after 14.
Thank you.
Second.
A motion and a second to amend the agenda. Those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Now we'll go to the amended motion. Those in favor of the amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of July 16, 2013.
Looking for a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any corrections? If not, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item three or two approve the bills you paid in the amount of $678,022.5.
Paid the bills?
Second.
A motion and a second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item four are reports. A is the register of D's official statement of fees collected during June 2013, and B is the auditor's account with the county treasurer as of June 30, 2013. Those have been received and are on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel. A is a motion to approve the routine action.
Move routine action.
Thank you. A motion and a second to approve routine action. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
There are no application for abatement today. The next item are notices and requests. Item A is to authorize the county auditor to publish a request for proposals for financial advisor services.
Ken, you have any comments?
No, other than we're holding this proposal open with the minimum amount of time that's required for publication purposes. We would open proposals on the 12th day of August 2013 at 2:00 PM, and that, and we will send out, we have a list in our office of past respondents to proposals of this type, so we'll make sure that it gets mailed and it'll be posted on our website and in the paper.
Mr. Litz, do you have any comments? Okay. Again, this is just for a financial advisor, not for an underwriter. These processes will be completely separate, and I think the RFP will be pretty clear on what our needs are, and hopefully by August 17, we'll have some good proposals from those people interested, so can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to publish the proposal for a financial advisor. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Item B is the East Dakota Water Development District Notice of Meeting on Thursday, July 25, 2013, at 9:00 AM at their office on 132B Airport Avenue, Brookings, South Dakota.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We happen to have the director of the East Dakota Water Development District here.
Yes. Any comments that you'd like to make this morning?
Mr. Chairman, no thank you, just moved.
You need to come to the mic, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Mr. Chairman, Jay Gilbertson of East Dakota Water Development District. Now, this is just the standard monthly notice of the meeting, and obviously you're all welcome to come up to Brookings, we'll have coffee and rolls, and very short meeting, so if you've got other things to do in Brookings, go to McCrory Gardens. Come on up.
Thank you, Jay. Any questions, Jay? If not, we'll go to item nine.
Item nine is petition for compromise of lien, John Peckus.
Thank you, Cindy. This is on DPNO 69127, an amount of $2,761.35. The auditor's office received an application for a compromise of lien submitted actually by the law firm that is currently representing the applicant. That would be Wilka Ann Walter. I believe Mary Ash is actually the attorney that wrote the request and the cover letter. Apparently, there was a settlement related to a slip and fall in the amount of $20,000, representing the amount received for the personal injury claim. Apparently, Minnehaha County does have a lien that primarily is for poor relief and public defender and court-appointed attorney services, and that is in the amount of $2,761.35. Of course, no payments have yet been received on the account. However, given the fact that she just received $20,000, she is requesting a release of the lien upon payment of $1,000, 36 percent of the lien amount. There is a settlement that was a attached, a settlement statement attached, that shows a list of all the different potential claimants out there, and how much some of them have actually reduced their claims, given the fact that the amounts of money that were received in the settlement don't cover all the bills, including Minnehaha County. The applicant unfortunately has been unemployed since his injury. He is primarily a manual laborer. He is unable to meet many of the physical demands of manual labor, and of course, he lives outside of Minnehaha County now. He lives way out in Murdo. So, once again, we'd have to go outside the county to try to collect this. It's not as though he is living right here in Minnehaha County. However, the proceeds would help him to move forward and get some, some shelter and basic necessities of life. So, I'll make the motion. I don't know if I'll get a second.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chair, I'll second for discussion.
Thank you. Before, before we go ahead, you can ask a question.
And I apologize. That was a poor motion on my part. The motion should be, and it was written in the letter, that it was a motion for $1,000, 36 percent, and to release the lien, but still hold it personally on him.
So, my, my question is, if we choose not to, what happens?
Well, if we don't, then ultimately, we do have a claim for that particular money, but the odds of us actually collecting on it, it would sit, and we'd have to hopefully get something from the settlement proceeds, and we'd have to bring an action against Wilka and Walter to go against the money that was being held in their trust account to try to recover that extra money.
An additional question?
Yes, sir.
This could be for Ken as well. No income tax forms with this application?
No, there weren't.
One, kind of piggybacking on what Commissioner Peckus said, if you approve the motion that is on the floor right now, we'd get $1,000. We would release our claim against those particular proceeds for that $1,000, but the remaining balance of the lien, the 1,700, will still be on the books and still be enforceable against the applicant to, for collection at a later date, but this is an opportunity you might have to get the $1,000 right now.
And may I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Ken, what are the odds of us actually collecting, although he's in Murdo?
Very little.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Commissioner Kelly?
Well, here again, I don't know why we put these liens on, because when they come to us, we say, "Well, okay, against this particular," this may be the only revenue this guy gets, you know, as far as working, manual labor, maybe, but that doesn't tell me he can't be a dishwasher or something like that. I mean, there's, again, the attorneys get 6,700 bucks right off the top, and we're out there holding the bag. At 2,500 of that is for public defender costs of the 2,700 and some dollars, so I will not be going forward.
Any other comments? Commissioner Barth?
You know, despite the fact that the proceeds will likely not go to food and shelter, but to extend the vacation this person's been on, I suspect that $1,000 in the hand is better than 3,300 or whatever in the bush.
Is Mary Ash here, by chance? She is not? Okay. John, did you have any other comments?
Well, I was just gonna echo the fact that we can bend over and pick $1,000 bucks off the floor, or we can refuse to pick it up and watch it rot.
Commissioner Hyberger?
I'm afraid if we don't take the $1,000, we won't get anything. There's enough creditors on here that I don't think we'll get anything.
Yeah, and what, if I might, when I review this, I think Commissioner Barth, the reason there's no tax returns attached is because there was no income on vacation. Well, I'm guessing he has a work-related injury.
Yeah.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second on the floor to accept the $1,000. I think we're gonna need a roll call vote.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Hyberger?
Yes.
Kelly?
No.
Peckus?
Yes.
Bennigan?
Yes. Motion passes four to one.
The next item is opportunity for public comment.
Good morning. If there's any individuals who would like to make any comments about any items that are not on the agenda, we'd like to hear from you now. Otherwise, we'll move to item number 10. No one's coming forward, so we'll go to item 10.
It's not quite 9:15.
Not quite 9:15.
So, we'll go to item 11, which is to authorize the chairman to sign the inter-local agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County pursuant to the disparate allocation determination for the U.S. Department of Justice 2013 Burn Justice Assistant Grant. Kristin Trana.
Good morning, Kristin Trana, administrative coordinator at the sheriff's office. I'm bringing to you a fairly routine action, something that we take action on most every year. It is an MOU that is needed, that is required for the grant application for the burn JAG. It is a, it divides the total amount of the grant into 65 percent for the city of Sioux Falls and 35 percent for Minnehaha County. The disparate allocation is something that was provided or recommended or, excuse me, authorized by the attorney general's office. So, if you have any questions, I'll have us to answer.
Commissioner Hyberger?
I just have a question. If we can, we can have a motion and sign on this, since this is, we can. Okay. I was just, because it was a grant, part of the grant application, I wanted to make sure that was okay, went forward with it before we did the number 10.
Okay. Commissioner Kelly?
Well, is this related to next year, or is this related to number 10?
This is related to number 10.
I don't think it's appropriate to take this up until we've done number 10. That's a public hearing, correct? Number 10.
Number 10 is to review, because that does require the hearing, excuse me, the joint spending plan that was developed for this particular grant. So, you're, that's the purpose of the hearing, is to do the spending plan. This particular allocation helps to determine that split and recognition of how those grant dollars are split because of the disparate allocation agreement that's in place. So, you should have no problems at least signing an agreement that says, "Here's the split," and then conducting the public hearing, and the reason for the public hearing is then to just simply go over the spending plan for those dollars.
Commissioner Peckus?
Yeah, so just to be clear, what we're doing is, on number 11, is we're actually approving the allocation from the state of South Dakota, and whatever that amount of money is, then we're going to take public input as to the line items or whatever the subdivision of that particular pot of money is. That's it. Okay.
Thank you, John. Any other comments?
If I talk for another two minutes, then we'd be okay.
I'll make a motion to approve number 11.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the agreement. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
We will move on to item 12, which is to authorize the chairman to sign the modified contract between Minnehaha County and the state of South Dakota for state inmate work release housing. The original contract was approved July 16, 2013.
Michelle Boyd, sheriff's office. I believe Warden Gromer had put in a request to defer this a week or two, and for whatever reason, it's still on the agenda, but we have, we have a couple of concerns about the modified contract that we want to work through before we go ahead and sign that, so we would ask that you would defer that at least for a week.
Is a week enough time, Michelle?
Let's do two, just to make sure.
So moved for deferral for two weeks.
Second. Motion and a second to defer item number 12 for two weeks. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go back to.
Now, we can go back.
Item 10, which is a public hearing to solicit comments on the proposed joint spending plan between the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County for the U.S. Department of Justice 2013 Burn Justice Assistance Grant. Kristin Trana.
Good morning, Kristin Trana, administrative coordinator at the sheriff's office. Two weeks ago, we provided you the plan that we had for spending on the burn JAG. I will quickly go over it, and then if there's any questions. The sheriff's office has $23,417 that they can spend, and what the allocation is, has been determined by the department, has been $8,417 for robot technology solution for the SWAT team, $10,000 for a web-based training program that would be available for all of the employees of the sheriff's office, and then $5,000 for training, it's more advanced training for investigations. The Sioux Falls Police Department has, has an allocation of $43,488, and they are going to use those funds to move the agency away from the 40 caliber firearms and move to 9 millimeter handguns. Any questions?
Any questions for Kristin? Commissioner Barth?
You know, our budget is very difficult, and, you know, every year, we get some of these requests, I mean, this, this thing comes through, and it's very helpful, but at the same time, it's not helping us that much in our budget, which is extremely stressed. As you know, whether it's in the jail, or whether it's in prosecution or defense, we just don't have very much money. And I think back to some of the things that we've purchased in the past. For example, we had a sniper rifle, which, the old one was reported defective, and we bought a new one. We still haven't had to shoot anyone, thank goodness, but are we, are we just sort of churning with this money? Are we, is there any way we can put it into our budget and, and help relieve some of the stress in the other areas?
We're limited of what we can purchase by the grant, and we cannot supplement our budget with the grant. And your comment about the sniper rifle, even though we haven't had to use it, we've had it out many, many times, and it's a very necessary piece of equipment that if we were not able to buy certain things like that, through these grants, we would have to request funding through the budget. We try to be really careful with what we use, or what we use the money for, and make sure that it's tools that our officers need for safety and security reasons to perform their duties of their job.
Well, I would just point out, we had a sniper rifle before, and then we got a new one, and we have handguns, and now we're getting new ones.
Well, it's Sioux Falls Police Department.
Well, similar. Thank you.
Commissioner Peckus, did you have a comment?
Well, I was just gonna comment that I remember when, I believe, our SWAT team was executing a search warrant, we were using 9 millimeter pistols, and the, you know, the unfortunate situations that this guy had a bunch of dogs. I think there were actually the nemesis breed present, the pit bull, and it went after one of the law enforcement officers with his 9 millimeter, and he shot the dog in the head, and the dog just kind of got angrier and went and sat down. It didn't put the dog down, so I can't believe they're going from a 40 caliber Glock, which is what we actually were transitioning to. But, you know, if they want to go to a pea shooter, I suppose that's Sioux Falls Police Department's decision, so, yeah.
I see where we are.
Patty is here, if, I don't know if she's up there.
Patty, if you'd like to follow that was comments?
Yeah.
And welcome.
Eli, in Sioux Falls Police Department. Actually, we did a lot of testing of the ammunition, and we found that the new 9 millimeter ammunition is a lot more.
Hard hitting?
Hard hitting than, the guns are easier to shoot, easier to train on, and we've tested it. The FBI is actually going that direction, so that's why we went.
May I ask a question? You know, when that, when Sheriff Milstead reported on that incident, we decided at that point to go to, I believe, a larger caliber handgun, or at least, we were considering it at the time. You understand the reason why we had concerns about that, at least with the 9 millimeters we were using at the time.
Right, and we also had 9 millimeters, and we also switched to 40 caliber Glock.
Ah, okay.
We're, we're now needing to replace our Glocks, because they're 16 years old.
Right.
And we did the research, and our armor actually is the one that suggested that we go to 9 millimeters.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions for Patty or Michelle?
Just a comment.
Commissioner Kelly?
I voted on the budget that went from 9s to 40s, now I'm voting on the budget to go from 40s to 9s, 16 years later, so.
Life begins at 40.
What goes around, comes around.
Right, but just, I just want to clarify, that's not where the sheriff's office is headed. We're not purchasing handguns. That would be city, and that's their allocation to spend the way they see fit in my opinion.
It's a cooperative agreement, correct?
Well, you know, that raises.
Commissioner Peckus?
You know, we try to collaborate. If the 9 millimeters are working, could we get any sort of efficiencies with the purchase of ammunition or anything like that, because it gets quite expensive? Do we purchase that jointly with the city to try to get better efficiencies?
No, we don't.
No? We should maybe look into that, maybe get on a consistent firearm. I don't know why we have to have different firearms. What's that?
We don't buy it at the consumer price, though we do get law enforcement pricing.
Okay. All right.
Any other comments or questions?
Move.
Looking for a motion?
Well, it's a public hearing.
I know, but I think we need to give them an approval to move forward in comments.
If there's anybody else that has.
Yeah, we will ask for public comment if.
It move approval.
Second. Is there any public comment? Evidently, there isn't any public comment, because they're too scared they'll get shot.
Sorry, it's just a 40. Just a 40, it won't hurt for long. It's an old gun.
If I was shooting, they wouldn't have any concerns. We have a motion and a second to approve the joint spending plan between the city and the county on the grant application. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
We'll move on to item 13, which are closing comments and a briefing from South Dakota Department of Legislative Audit for the FY 2013 Minnehaha County Audit. Jeff Schaefer.
Good morning, Jeff.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Schaefer. I'm with the Department of Legislative Audit and indifference. And I've just recently completed the fiscal 12 Financial and Compliance Audit of Minnehaha County. At this point in time, the audit is finally, in its final form, and so it's, we're trying to be published or put out to everyone. I think everyone has been supplied with a management letter that our office issued, and I guess if you have any questions at any point in time, please feel free to ask, but I would like to ask you to turn your attention to the second page. These are, there's five points on here that I'd like to discuss with you today. In the middle of the second page, there's under the heading, it says deficiencies noted in internal control, which did not rise to a level of being a significant, a material weakness or significant deficiency, yet important enough to merit the attention of those in charge of governance. Item A there, internal accounting controls over financial reporting were inadequate, resulting in inaccurate information being presented to users of the annual financial report. Reporting errors were noted in the following areas: inventory, equity, accounts payable, wages payable, taxes receivable, capital assets, revenues expenditures, receipts and expenses. These errors have been corrected.
Jeff, well, first of all, does anyone have any questions? When we read that, obviously, you said that it doesn't rise to the level of being a material weakness, but can you tell us a little bit of how many of those quote corrections you had to make?
Well, we, it's, the process of the audit is we accumulate errors up through the entire audit, and we have a material amount that we set at the beginning of the audit based on the assets and liabilities, and any number that goes over that amount is considered material.
Right.
And we must make those adjustments. And the thing under that, we have auditors discretion, professional judgment, as if we make those for proper presentation or not. We, I think there was probably eight or 10 formal adjustments that we had to make that went over that amount and were supposed to be reported. There were other less than significant items that were listed on a lead schedule potential adjustments that were supplied to the auditor and assistant auditors that we did not make, but we disposed them to them also.
So, those you compiled into one larger adjustment, or?
They affected several different things. It was just, it wasn't just one large one. There's, there's several unposted adjustments, but immaterial in nature. These were the ones that would, for present, proper presentation or material to the financial statements.
Commissioner Kelly?
Jeff, have these been noted before? You've done an awful lot of audits here.
Right, we have, and in the past, we've always had, well, we've always had a last letter on our master lead schedule, which was called, generally, an oral comment that we just mentioned to the, those in charge in the offices, that we just said that there were numerous errors noted in these areas. They're a little more significant this year than they have been in the past, so we just elevated it to those in charge of governance, we brought it to your attention also. It's not uncommon for an audit to have adjustments, and in fact, it's, I have not been involved in one where there hasn't been an adjustment of some nature, so.
Were there changes in procedure which created, brought this up to a higher level, or?
I don't know if it's, if it's procedural, a lot of times, there are changes there with reporting standards and stuff that come into play. We're under the same kind of changes for different things in, different, oh, there was a, the biggest thing was a GAZI 54 change, some of the things with equity, a lot of things that happened with equity this year. And first year, second year out, there's a lot of things that can be, do those changes cause errors and stuff. Nothing uncommon to a normal audit, though, I would say.
Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Schaefer, I appreciate all your hard work, and I know that you guys do everything you can to find anything that's happening. What actions does this commission need to take, do you feel, at this time? Is there anything that we should do that?
I guess we don't have any action, if you will, because anything that was material, we corrected and stuff like that. We're just bringing this to your attention, that these type of things were occurring.
If I may, Mr. Chair. So, you're saying that there's nothing that we, as a commission, missed that we should have done at this point?
I, I can't say that there is, no.
Thank you.
Why don't we go ahead and continue on?
Okay. A little bit farther down the page, under immaterial violations of laws, rules, and regulations, and provisions, contracts, and grant agreements. Item A there, the county charged indirect administrative support cost in the amount of $27,528.24 to the county road and bridge fund for costs associated with payroll, administration, personnel management, administrative and legal. Is the county's, if it is the county's intention to cover these costs, the county should establish an internal service fund to cover the actual cost for particular government function. This practice should be consistently applied for all departments. I believe that's a recent, from previous years. Item B, the county authorized general government expenditures in the amount of $4,576.48 from the county road and bridge fund in violation of STCL 3211-2. We recommend the county refrain from making general government expenditures for the county road and, from the county road and bridge fund. Those are for park expenditures.
For what kind of expenditure?
It was park fund.
Okay.
Park is a, it should be under general fund. If you turn the page, top of the next page, item C, general government expenditures exceeded appropriations for a historical museum by $48,000 through 4432, and debt service by $16,750. We recommend a sufficient budget be appropriated to eliminate blind animal press.
Were those expenditures payroll, or what were they identified as?
The debt service wouldn't have been, for sure. I don't know exactly what the historical museum would cause that blind animal to do with.
Question? Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Schaefer, so would those have been because we didn't do a supplement, a supplement to those accounts soon enough?
Likely, yes.
So, we, we paid them before we supplemented them, is that?
Right, yeah. Budget authority wasn't there. Okay?
Thank you.
The last item on there, item D, the SD and TIF agreement states that the TIF agreement is to be continued for 15 years after the completion of the project or until the public improvement project costs are recovered. The completion date and the project costs have not been certified with the county. And I think this, it was in place last year, it was kind of an oral comment, but we're bringing this up, because I still haven't done that. I'd like to have that done, please. Other than that, like I said, we had other immaterial items, and there were other smaller items that we discussed with the appropriate officials on oral comments, but that's pretty But that's pretty much what we have today. Are there any questions on anything or...
Any questions about the management letter? The items that were orally discussed either this year or last year that are now on this management letter, can you identify which ones those are so that we know?
We, I've discussed every item on here with, with officials or appropriate personnel as, as we go through the audit. We have another audit document called a master lead schedule. That accumulates all findings that we have in, it doesn't matter how immaterial. Those would have the oral comments on it. None, there are none of them on here.
Is it possible for us to get a copy of that?
It would be.
Your worksheet, so to speak?
Yeah, audit document, I guess it would be.
Okay. Think that would be appropriate for us to have in the management of the county finances and specifically the office, so. Any other questions?
Want to know the audit being published and being held?
It's, we're a little short-staffed in peer right now, but it's, it's out there right now being put together, so that's, it went last week, so I would imagine sometime in the next thirty-eight.
My guess is you're asking that question because the financial advisor needs that for some documentations of ranking and ratings? Commissioner Pecus?
Couple of years ago, Jeff, you pointed out that we needed some severe updating of our software package down in the auditor's office. And least from your experience in the last year, has that concern been alleviated with some of the IT upgrades that we've made here at Minnehaha County?
Your software system is county-wide, the thing you currently use, and it is not specific to the auditor's office.
Right.
And we've always, you made some upgrades to it, and, and this is of your choosing.
Right.
It is a system that has considerable age. And there are some efficiencies that are noted in, well, in twenty-three years or twenty-five years that you've had this system. I think it might even be longer than that. There have been significant changes that, it's my personal feeling that it would be to your benefit or the county's benefit to look into those.
Right.
Integrate the software system amongst all offices. But is there anything deficient in what you currently use? No.
All right.
And, but that's my personal feeling, I guess.
All right. All right, well, thank you for the candid observation.
You know, I hate to do this to you, but would you go through those journal entries in a little more detail just to tell me the kind... Yeah, the ones that you figured were material that are on the...
Okay, I sure could, but I'm a little embarrassed. I don't have a copy of those with me. I'd be glad to do that.
You want to use mine?
But if you have a copy of them, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, here.
Well, here, I've got an extra.
I got, I got one.
I got an extra.
Oh, okay, he's got an extra one.
Here you go.
He's got a paper cup.
Everybody wants to get rid of their accounting records. I think it's important for us to be able to understand where the weaknesses are and, frankly, why you had to make those entries.
And a lot of these could be presentations, they maybe, the first one there, item one says due from other governments and payroll benefits payable. Actually, it looked a little awkward. It was a negative payable that was reported on the financial segments. Negative payable was actually receivable, and that's what it was. So we just changed that. Number two, unassigned fund balance and interest receivable. We, we eliminated the, through the course of setting up receivable for your SAFOM project, fund balance was arbitrarily increased by hundred, two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand. Then there were some payments made, and this was the balance that was remaining. And we eliminated that receivable and arbitrary increase in fund balance. Number three...
I don't think you have to go through the smaller ones, Jeff.
Okay.
I'm more interested in bigger items.
Which ones you'd like me to look at?
Maybe the ones four.
Four.
Which is the special items.
Okay, well, the special, that, that kind of relates to a little bit to number two. But then special items there, you'll notice that the two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand dollars, that was the amount that fund balance was increased in total for the setting up that was interest receivable for the SAFOM loan. That amount showed up as a special item on exhibit four. And we eliminated that. And then the resulting, what it really was is there's an eighty-two dollars, fifty cent amount shown as a prior period adjustment on the financial statements. That in itself is immaterial, but it turned out that the adjustment really consisted of four-hundred-and-two thousand dollars this way, two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand this way, another one-hundred-and-eighty-six this way, and the net effect was eighty-two. That was, so it was, it was quite a piece of work to put together, is what it was.
And then the following journal entry is to reclassify the fund balance?
That's correct.
And then if you go down to, need a bigger screen or better glasses?
Me too.
Item five on the road and bridge fund?
Oh, I believe that that was with the STIP funds that came down, that state, state revenue was showing up as miscellaneous revenue, and it should be state-grant revenue, actually it's a reclass.
Okay. And then there's a couple of larger items after that. Restricted for debt service.
That was in, trying to think of what fund that was in right offhand, but what it, what it actually was, was, this is one of those GASB fifty-four changes. It required that you show restricted amounts and for debt service. But the amount we had exceeded the actual fund balance, so there was a large number there for debt service, and then a big negative number there that was restricted amount. The net effect of the two was the right number. But we had, it was, I think they were under the assumption that they had to show the entire amount that was required there as debt service, but the, actually, the net effect is always required to be reported.
Okay. Got you. Any other questions for Jeff? Any comments, Bob, that you'd like to make? I think we need a motion to approve the audit.
I'll make that motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the audit, and we'll get a certified copy, so to speak, in about a month, hopefully.
I'm thinking this somewhere that'd be feasible.
In your guesstimation, did you spend more time here this year than you have in the past, or is it about the same?
I, it's hard to compare one audit to the next. We did have a little more time, a little more time in the equity section than we have in the past, and that's what the fund balance and equity portion, that was due to that. Other than that, like I say, one audit, it is hard to compare one to the next with different things, refunding issues or whatever that might, might occur, so.
Other comments? Commissioner Kelly?
Do changes in, what do you call it, G A S B or whatever the heck that is?
G A S B.
Do those changes fly or create a lot of these, or have there not been significant changes?
It can, it can change, you know, Minnehaha County being as large as it is, and it has, it affects many more things to have here. You present your report on a full-blown GAAP basis. A lot of counties, I think, there's only eight counties in the state that do that. The rest of them present their financial statements on what's called O CBOA or other comprehensive basis of accounting, which is cash. Their balance sheet would just show cash and fund balance. Whereas you show, you show the inventory, receivables, payables, and you've chosen to do that, which I think is, is a good thing. I mean, I think that county this size needs to monitor those balances in that detail. But, so, any type of change that comes along from GASB reflects a lot of things, you know, and it will, it will always hit Minnehaha County every time. So its OPEB liability won't affect the little ones, but it will here, you know? And if it's something to do with, you know, anything, will always affect Minnehaha County.
Were there a significant number of those here, or is this just common? Was it normal as far as...
This is, this is pretty much normal. There wasn't anything out of the ordinary this year. There was just kind of some rollover from last year. Last year, fifty-four was effective, G A S B fifty-four for the fund balance and equity classifications was effective last year. This is more of a, just kind of a continuation of that. I think we've got things on the...
Thank you.
Straighten that out.
Other comments, questions? My guess is, and I think I've heard various numbers about what the software purchase costs are, but we're talking seven figures at least.
I, I'm sure you are. And again, you know, it's not as our office saying that this should be, but I think that it would be prudent at some point in time to the Minnehaha County to visit that, that area.
Commissioner Pecus?
Well, you know, Detroit just filed for bankruptcy protection, the city of Detroit. And, you know, one thing that we have to defend most vigorously is our auditor's office and our ability to correctly present financial information for you, primarily for our bond rating. And, you know, obviously, when there's a change in G A S B, we need to follow through on that because that is a change that was made because, obviously, we want to protect the public and be good stewards with public money. Because if there's a deficiency, G A S B is designed to try to plug those holes so that we don't have situations develop where we have our local governments get upside down in their financials, correct?
Right, and proper reporting, reporting with GAAP, generally except for county principles, is, is what we're checking on, I guess.
Thank you for your efforts in clarifying all those things. And the other thing, we do appreciate the fact that you are dedicated to make this happen quickly as possible because I know you're almost free, but not quite.
Not quite.
Not quite.
I pay the bill, I know you ain't free.
And I, I will get you a copy of our master lead schedule, if you'd...
I think that would be appropriate for us. We have a motion and a second to accept the legislative audit. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
I think we're on item fourteen.
Item fourteen, a briefing from Minnehaha County Planning and Zoning on Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System and MS four requirements in Minnehaha County. Scott Anderson, Travis Hall.
Thank you, Scott Anderson with the Planning Department. And today I'm giving you an informational item as in the form of a briefing memo. I'm going to be giving you some general information, and then Travis will give you a short PowerPoint presentation. In May, I was informed by the Department of Environment, Natural Resources that they would be holding a meeting to inform us of a new program that they were going to be requiring the county to participate in called the MS four system. Basically, what that is, is a, it's going to be implemented in a two-mile, roughly a two-mile buffer around the city of Sioux Falls. And this MS four program is for, is, the official name is Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, which is the acronym of MS four. And currently, this program is already being implemented or is already in operation in Pennington and Meade County. What this does, and Travis will explain a little bit more in the PowerPoint presentation, but this is a program that, that comes out of the EPA Clean Water Act. And it is a program that covers highly populated areas of urban area to address highway, street drainage, development drainage, catch basins, curves, gutters, ditches, and storm drains. And the program features a multifaceted approach towards addressing this, this concern, the stormwater discharge. And furthermore, we, we have three impaired bodies of water identified by EPA, and they monitor the inflow into those bodies of water in this MS four area. And those bodies of water are the Big Sioux River, Pipestone Creek, and Skunk Creek. So basically, what we were told, we, they had a meeting in Canton on June twenty-sixth, and the following people participated. There were Lincoln County, because there's areas in Lincoln County that are now going to be included in this MS four program, Union County, and I believe Jefferson and the town, city of Jefferson, and Harrisburg. There, they indicated that we have until December thirty-first to file, have official action from the county commission to submit a notice of intent. And that notice of intent would basically give us five years to implement the program into a full-fledged MS four program. And eventually, that would require permitting of development within that identified, identified area. And then there's also review of the construction in addition to the permitting. So there'd be site plan review of the development, then there'd be permitting of the development, and then there'd be final inspection or a follow-up inspection to make sure that it was constructed, meeting the requirements outlined in the MS four program. That's one component. There's another component that would deal with public education and outreach, and we can do that a number of ways through the internet programs, programs such as stenciling storm sewers, which we really don't have storm sewers, that you could stencil a fish that says this is flowing into the Big Sioux River or wherever. But I'd be glad to answer any questions, but before I, before I get to Mike allowing you or asking if you have any questions for me, I'd like to introduce Travis Hall. He's, he attended the sessions with me, and he prepared a short PowerPoint presentation. So why don't, I'll have Travis come up.
Travis, introduce yourself, as a commission, and give the presentation.
As you said, my name's Travis Hall. I'm the new intern in the planning department. I've been here since May twenty-ninth. So like Scott said, we're going to have a briefing on June twenty-sixth as a result of a note received on the twentieth about being mandated to go into this program. Myself and Scott were present, and Lincoln, Union Counties were present, as well as the city of Harrisburg and Jefferson. The purpose is to address highway, street, and development runoff in areas directly adjacent to Sioux Falls. It's basically a two-mile buffer. It improves awareness and alleviates discharge in impaired bodies of water. As you said, it was the Big Sioux River, Pipestone Creek, and Skunk Creek.
Mr. Chairman, Travis, could you hold the mic a little closer to yourself there?
Okay.
You're good there, just point it over towards you.
Okay. Here's the coverage area. You can see in green is the city of Sioux Falls, and then the red is, the red in this light color right here is unincorporated areas that are near the city, but they are outside of their jurisdiction. That's the area that this covers. So how do you do that? You detect and you eliminate the discharges. You develop, implement, and enforce procedures to detect and eliminate illicit discharges. Some of these procedures include construction, site plan review, site inspections, and enforcement. Some of those procedures are sediment infiltration basins, vegetated filter strips, riparian zones along streams and water bodies, green infrastructure, and just general protection of natural resources. You can see infiltration basins on the upper right fixture, and then just a general photo of the Big Sioux River. You just, you know, you try to protect that, those areas as much as possible. This is an example of a riparian zone. Basically, somehow you put this into a code saying, you know, requiring that trees and prairies and stuff like that near rivers don't become affected or overdeveloped, things like that. In site reviews, you, you go out there and you make sure that people are protecting, you know, fence, you know, proper, not irrigation, but just proper erosion controls and things like that to make sure that things don't get into water bodies. Probably one of the easier aspects of this is just public awareness, and distribute educational information with a website, and that could be one of the first steps you do. Brochures, letters, signage, and stenciling, as Scott said, we don't really have many storm sewers in the county, but highway signage and public service announcements are another option. Here's just an example of signage. You can put this in a neighborhood, on a road, whatever, just reminding people that stuff that goes into their ditches will eventually wind up in, you know, the Big Sioux River, Skunk Creek, wherever. These can go on doorways, just another example. Like I said, there aren't really any storm drains in rural areas of the county, but this is just something that they suggested. So as Scott said, existing programs in South Dakota are Pennington and Meade Counties, they coincide with particular towns already. So there is a waiver saying that you don't have to participate in the program, but that is for, you know, areas in red that are under a thousand people. There are some subdivisions in this area alone that are over a thousand people, so we are ineligible. So like I said, there are particular areas, especially right here, that are already over a thousand people, and then you include all these other red areas here. So basically, it's mandated that we participate in the program. So with that being said, we came up with potential expenses, and as I said, I put the asterisk there, subject to change, you just never know. the asterisk there, subject to change, you just never know. Research, initial and ongoing staffing, materials, transportation, a website, staff it or hire a consultant for a website, signage, stenciling, designing and creating placement, you know, the transportation to get them there, enforcement, you got to staff it and you need transportation to get there, and then public education, staffing, venues, transportation materials, media. And then there's always that option of litigation, you just never know. So the next steps would be to send the letter of intent by December thirty-first, develop a timeline to implement. You got to obviously identify which fits the county the best, and begin a plan for education and public participation.
Thank you, Travis. Commissioner Hyperger?
I just have a question. Thank you, Travis. On the coverage area, are we only responsible for the red areas, or since Del Rapids and Hartford are larger municipalities too, are we going to be responsible for areas outside of there?
It's my understanding that we'd only be responsible.
Scott, talk to the mic.
It's my understanding we'd only be responsible for the areas that are in the red and the light green, which are phase one and two. These came about through identifying growth in the two thousand ten census, which then pushed us up over that number, which required them to include us in the M S four program in the state.
Commissioner Kelly? The financial impact, now, I know what we show here, but also there's going to be a cost to our citizens, I would guess, remediating these issues.
Definitely.
Any idea where we're talking? Are we talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, or?
You know, it really depends on the size of the project. I can see, for example, something like the Lyons, let's say the Lyons Grain Elevator. Basically, they're going to have to contain a pre-flow runoff on their property to a state where they're not increasing the flows without having that filtered somehow into Skunk Creek. I mean, that would be an example, but any, any development is going to have to meet the criteria and the requirements set forth by D E N R for offflows, flows off their property.
So this is a free country, but they're going to tell us what we have to do. Is that, I mean, we have little choice on this thing.
It didn't appear that we had a lot of choice, and that's why I wanted to bring this to you right away. I mean, I didn't want to drag this out and wait to the last minute to tell you that, basically, by December thirty-first, we will have to sign a notice of intent, and starting next year, we will start implementing a plan. We have, we're going to have to submit a plan. A plan's going to have to be written, submitted to P E R, to D E N R. That will have to be reviewed and approved, and then once they approve our overall plan and how we're going to implement this, then we start to implement it.
One question, one follow. We have no storm sewers. Or is this going to force us into putting storm sewers in some of these areas, or does the ditch runoff also apply?
It's my understanding that you will not be required to implement storm sewers, but you have to treat that water that comes off that property in some way so it's protected, so you're reducing sediment flows and chemicals and whatnot. And that may be, as Travis showed you, the one slide of the catchment basement, basin, where you have water that is flowing into the upper pitcher. Let's say for like a new development or an onsite, a large commercial development may have to build these catch basins. And you see these often, if you, let's say you drive up north, Westport, up by the Sanford Field House and Arena, whatever, you can see some of those new industrial buildings. They have to build those catch basins right at basically the end of their parking lot, so all the water off the parking lot flows into the catch basin, it's settled out, and then flows out at a metered rate and has been somewhat, I suppose, according to the state, purified.
Commissioner Barth?
Looking at the coverage area, it doesn't show, for example, Lyons. And if it's only, you know, Minnehaha County, then whatever's dumped in the water, say an S line, they don't care? I mean?
They don't care. And that's correct. I mean, I shouldn't, I didn't mean to indicate that Lyons would have to do that. I just indicated that a project of that size, it could have a large cost associated for a project.
So our true coverage area is what we see on this map? Is that what?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that, Commissioner Barth, is of course, subject to change.
Of course.
We are in two thousand thirteen. What will happen is in two thousand twenty, when we get our next census, our areas will be, growth will be identified, and they'll be added on there.
Commissioner Hyperger?
I mean, it looks to me like we're just kind of coming in compliance with what the city of Sioux Falls already does, but in the rural county, because the city of Sioux Falls already has these in effect and a part of their ordinances. So will our ordinances somewhat mirror what they have, because as they continue to grow into our rural area, what they're doing is taking over what we've done.
Exactly. And we, and that's, Commissioner Hyperger, a good, a good point. We certainly can piggyback on what the city of Sioux Falls has done, and we can look at the system, the program that they have, and see if there's some way that we can join forces. But ultimately, the work, I mean, we can, we can use their, their program model after their system, but the city of Sioux Falls will not go through the permitting, will not do the site plan review. I mean, it'll all fall on us, but we can work together. And I know the cities of Rapid City and Pennington County, they have sort of a program that they work together, and we contacted representatives out there to sort of see how that worked, how it works, how they went through it, how they got it set up.
Commissioner Hyperger?
One more question. So with this project, we will do a letter of intent by the end of the year, and then the plan doesn't have to be written up until what point? I mean, March, April, May? I mean, you don't have to have the plan written up when you do the submitting?
No.
So the plan will be in two thousand fourteen, we'll start working on the plan?
Yep. And that's correct. Basically, we have till December thirty-first to indicate, to sign that notice of intent, and then we have five years to implement the program on a staggered, I mean, on a scheduled basis. They, of course, want you to start out with approving, getting a plan written and approved, getting, sending that off, and it's going to, you know, it's going to have to be detailed. It's going to have to be very explicit, meeting the requirements set forth by the D E N R and the EPA, to make sure that we meet all the requirements they're going to have to do. And, you know, this is all brand new to me as well. So I, I'm, we're going to have to research this, make sure that we fully understand it, so we are not out of compliance in some fashion, and then start the work.
Commissioner Kelly?
We're, we talked Minnehaha County, but these red areas, I don't think Pipestone Creek flows anywhere near any of these, does it? I'm not sure, but, I mean, Hartford, Humboldt, those areas are not affected by this thing at all?
No. Not at this point.
Okay. So really, we're just looking at the red areas to develop?
Red and light green.
Light green.
So like split rock heights out by?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's included in?
Commissioner Peckus?
I was just going to comment that the red and the light green areas are within a stone's throw of the city of Sioux Falls, and I wouldn't spend a lot of resources on trying to build a better mousetrap. I think we should just call the city of Sioux Falls, see what they're doing, and work with them collaboratively to try to follow through with what they're doing. I mean, good heavens, look at the areas.
Commissioner Barth?
Just would say that we do have a unique resource today with Jay Gilbertson. I wonder if he might comment on this.
Jay, would you like to make a comment?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, Jay Gilbertson, East Dakota Water Development District. Dealing with stormwater has been a difficulty for the state for a number of years. The city of Sioux Falls, by virtue of being the biggest community in the state, has had to deal with permit issues for a very long time. There's a second tier of communities, over about ten thousand, that have sort of backed into it, which is why Mead County and Sturgis have to get involved. Communities below, I think, again, ten is the number, don't automatically have to deal with stormwater issues. But as Hartford and other communities grow, if they are so lucky as to exceed those numbers, then they'll have to come to deal with these programs. But it's been noted, there are plenty of examples around the state of how this has been done, I think, quite effectively. You know, you have a hundred and eighty days to just say, okay, we're going to consider it, and then five years. You know, this is South Dakota, there's nobody from D N R's going to be up here next week with a gun to your head, forcing you to do pretty much anything at all. And an awful lot of it is simple public education, letting people know what's going on. We've done quite a bit of work with the city of Brookings to address some of those public outreach needs, and as I indicated to Commissioner Barth yesterday, would be more than happy to work with Scott and the staff and the commission on, in any way possible we can to, again, find the things that have been done elsewhere, bring them down here. We've got a couple of folks in the house right now that are working on some stormwater identification things back in Brookings that I suspect would work very nicely, so we'd be, again, we'll be happy to work with you with any capacity that you see fit.
Thank you, Jay. We certainly would appreciate the help, because I think that, as Commissioner Peckus and others have said, ninety-five percent of what we see is the city of Sioux Falls, they've already got the mousetrap built, and we've got examples in Pennington County, Brookings, and other places where I don't know that we need to spend a huge amount of resources to make this thing a new project, if you will, and if we have five years for implementation, they may change their mind three times. So this is another great example of unfunded federal mandate, and gets a little frustrating, to say the least. Any other comments? I've already talked to Ken about this, because when I saw it the first time, that was my first reaction, was that it is an unfunded mandate, and I was told that there's exceptions, and guess what? We're part of that process.
It's amazing on the limitation on the state mandated statute, I mean, about how much of it that counties do that is exempt from the mandate. I mean, there are seven exemptions from the mandate, and I'll just quickly read them from you. The limited effect of state mandates to provide newer activities or services on local government does not apply to any law, rule, or regulation that, one, concerns the conduct of an election. You know, we're pretty big into elections. Two, and I think this is where the exemption falls in on this one, required by federal law. Three, required to fund the unified judicial system. I think we put a lot of money into that one as well. To required to fund the welfare system. Creating, modifying, or repealing any criminal law. Reauthorizing but not expanding existing statutory authority, or specifying a minimum salary for public officials. Those are the seven exceptions, and almost every one of them, pretty much, you combine all of them together, pretty much makes us, there's not much left.
So unfunded mandates don't mean a thing to the counties.
In my opinion, no. That's, that's immaterial, because so many of the exemptions wipe, include almost everything we do.
Sounds like our job description, actually. Any questions for Travis or Scott about the briefing that was presented? If not, we can talk a little bit about five B, if you'd like, for a minute.
I was asked, I became aware that you were going to have a discussion on potential staffing for the planning department. I prepared another short briefing memo on staffing needs, which I provided to you. Within that staffing memo, I indicated the number, the various ordinances that we deal with in the county planning department. Likewise, just to give you sort of an idea of the workload and the type of work that we do, I gave you some figures on the number of applications, permits, inspections, zoning violations that we open for the years of two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve, which is basically the last two years. And then finally, I sort of did a short summary indicating that in the past ten years, for example, we have issued permits for approximately seven hundred and fifty new homes, and each one of those homes, you know, with the more, with additional growth that is occurring out in the county, it requires additional services, and I think that goes without saying, and that impacts not only the county, it impacts the county highway department, the sheriff's department, all of, all of the counties impacted, because more people require more services. So I would be glad to answer any questions that you, you have. I just thought I'd give this to you for some general information and be here to answer any questions you might have.
We appreciate the information. Any questions for Scott at this point, or this will probably be part of our conversation for the budget process? Other comments, questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to item fifteen, which is the county liaison reports. Any reports from the commission? Any new business? Any old business? If not, I would like a motion to go into exec session, and hopefully this will only take five or six minutes.
Then we have budget.
Pardon?
Then we have budget.
Then we have a budget hearing that will begin right after that. So if you wouldn't mind, we need to have this addressed, so I'd like a motion to go into exec session for personnel. So moved.
Second.
Yeah, questions?
I wonder if we could maybe meet in there instead of turning everything off in here.
This is your last?
Uh.